Planning Commission, Wednesday, August 10th, 2022 meeting. And we'll start with the approval of our July 12th and July 26 minutes. Is there any discussion? And if not, do we have an approval to our motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes on the 12th and the 26th?
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion approved. And then we'll move on to the council liaison report for August 1st. And Tom, if you would do the honors?
Sure. Council met on August 1st. The, it was a relatively short meeting. The, probably one of the major things is the Joint Powers Board for the Fire Department continues to build. It gets fleshed out. So it's, they're approving the administrative documents and stuff like that to get that all set up. They also approved Teddy Zierden to be on the planning and zoning. And another item that did come up that got approval was the, to raise the rental rates for this building, having some problems with people not leaving it in the appropriate condition, not locking doors, leaving windows open, et cetera. So we're going to be increasing the fees for that and then we can have a little bit more control over it. So all in all, it was a relatively short meeting and pretty much straightforward. Any questions? Okay.
All right, then we'll move on to our first open forum. Open forum is for anybody who's in the audience that would like to voice a question, concern that they have that is currently not on the agenda in another public hearing on the agenda. So this is the first of the open forums. There will be a second one later on. Would anyone like to approach? And if you do, please state your name and address. All right, then we will go ahead and close open forum number one and move on to the public hearing. We have a variance application, V 22003, for Matthew and Rhonda Hanson of 10673 Oak Grove Drive in Breezy Point, parcel 13697. And we will open the public hearing and start with the applicant presentation. So if somebody would like to come up and speak, they may identify themselves and who they're with and the address.
Hi, Dennis Blossberg, 35345 Velvet Lane, Crosslake. We were in here for a variance last year, I guess it was, something like that, to get a reduced side yard setback for a septic tank installation on a very small property. And we attempted installation about six weeks ago and exhausted, I think, all options. We had excavated, we started excavation, dropped off the tank. We hired Crowing Power to clamp the pole. There's a power pole that's right close to the excavation. And paid them to be there to do that. We had our excavator there. We kind of exhausted all options to be able to put it where we thought it would go. The neighbor's tree, a large white pine was probably, the excavation would have been about three feet from that base of the tree, which I didn't recognize until we're standing there. And we'd have probably been about seven feet below that base of that tree. So the angle of repose between the hill, I don't know if anybody saw the photos or anything, but there's a road there that we've kind of trying to maintain to keep it from collapsing. If we dug further down adjacent to that incline, it just was gonna, we were gonna lose part of the road, part of the neighbor's shed, and likely in the future, the tree. So we abandoned all the excavation and the people that were there. And here I am again, looking for a reduced lakeside setback to 55 feet versus 75 for that tank. And that's on the right in the yellow. And Jerry just handed me something from the neighbor. I don't know if that's something. We'd, they'd asked, the neighbor to the, to the west had asked that we move it over to the 10-foot side yard requirement. And then they'd be fine with it, so my understanding.
So is that available to move it to the 10 feet instead of the 4?
Yeah, there's room to do it.
Okay.
So where would it move? To the right? Can I ask some more questions? Can you rotate that tank? Can you make it a smaller tank?
It can't be smaller. It was, the design showed that had to be.
Because it, doesn't it just pump it up to a drain field across the road?
Yep.
So it has to be 1,500 gallons, huh?
It's, it's 2,000.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's a two-piece unit. That's the only way to get it in there. And it could be rotated certainly, yeah.
Of course, that doesn't help the lake situation.
I was trying to reduce that impact and also trying to find a spot for it, but.
So is the main reason for moving it, because you had mentioned a shed in a tree, but if the shed in the tree were not there, would there still be a request to move it because of the road?
Well, there's a power pole right in that pole. And then you see the tree right behind that meter. Yeah, the tree right there and that shed. It's the neighbor's shed in their tree. If it weren't there, I suppose we could, I don't know, the power company wasn't willing to do anything more than they were there. We paid them to hold that thing while we started and they said, nope. They called two engineers and it kicked us out. Said, we're not gonna do it. We tried. Yeah, where the, where the tank is sitting right there is about where it would go. And with the request, but as with the neighbor's request, it'd be another six, four toward middle to the east in front of the house.
Can you move it back at all towards the house?
That would encroach on the 10-foot requirement for the distance for the tank.
So it has to be a minimum 10 feet from the house to the tank?
Yep. Correct. And I suppose it could be spun. I don't know if we gain anything from that other than taking more from that 55 feet.
And it won't fit on the other side?
On the east side?
Yeah.
It's, if you were to be there, you'd say, no possible way. It's, there's just, there's not a spot. Everything's, everything's plumbed to that west side as well, down three feet below the side.
Oh, you're gonna dig that line in? Won't that cave in too?
No, we, we captured the line from the, this line up here. That, their tank was, was here, captured that line right under the foundation.
Oh.
It actually goes.
So it doesn't really go where it chose the line, huh?
No, we, we, we had to collapse the road.
Looks like a big tank.
Well, I don't know that my drawing is necessarily perfect. The black one above is, that's by the architect minus with a different program just for illustration more so than anything. They're bigger when they're above ground, when they're, no, when they're below ground.
Yeah. So when you dug it, did you try the sheet, you know, shoring it up and?
We, we, we had everything that we could possibly do between equipment with Crowing Power standing there holding the pole at the top. And at that base where that hill comes out, it doesn't look that steep, but it actually is. If they were up there holding that pole, we tried to excavate 10 feet below where, you see where that blue foam is?
Yeah.
Slip sheet, 10 feet below that spot.
And the reason it has to be 10 feet down is because there's no pump in the basement? So it's all?
No, there's no basement. It's across, it's a, I'm sorry, it's slab on, it's a walkout.
It's a walkout, right.
Yeah, but the, 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 I'm not sure which question is maybe.
If the sewer tanks were higher up, you'd have to pump to the tank, right?
There's no, there's no, there's no elevation change. In that situation, you would, there's only a, probably from a foot from the top of that tank is where the inlet is. And three feet below the slab running from the bathroom all the way.
That's what I mean. The bathroom would have to be a lift bathroom if you had that tank higher.
No, it would only make a difference of a foot if wherever you put that and it's one more mechanical system to put in there, but it still wouldn't have fit in there. If it's 10 feet or it's eight feet excavation, you're still gonna have a similar problem. And that white pine that's right by that lawnmower would have been a problem.
I'm still confused that where that sewer line is coming out, you gotta dig it down 10 feet?
No, the, the tank.
10 feet from the house.
The, the tank is.
Right, but I thought you said the hole was 10 feet deep.
You look at the side view of the tank?
Yeah.
The, the tank will be buried, you know, about a foot or so below grade.
Right.
And then the inlet, I believe, is like a foot or 18 inches below that top of that tank. And then the bottom of the tank obviously sits that other, you know, the stack is about this tall of those two.
Tanks.
Yeah. Now, if we had put it, any pump anywhere, you'd still have that tank with sitting below grade by a foot at least. The practice to go to.
Is that a two-compartment tank then?
Uh, I believe it's a three. Yeah. But we had to do two pieces because it was too heavy to do in one. Yeah. And we couldn't get the truck in there to actually dump a single unit.
Still a little confused. It's a 2,000 gallon. Initially, it said 1,500. And it has to be that big because?
Initially, it was 1,500 because I was looking for dimensions for a tank. And I didn't have a design for this. It was pre, it was, we were in preliminary design. We hadn't had a design done. Martin had been out there, but he didn't finish the design, Martin Joyce. And I was looking for dimensions of a tank. So I used the dimensions for, for the information for this metal.
Actually, if you move that tank over, won't it get closer to the lake?
I'm sure.
You move that tank to 10 feet from the property line.
No, it's not closer to the lake. No, it'd be just.
Wouldn't be?
The house.
I know, but if you slid it that way.
It's parallel.
Really? Okay. Because that 10 feet's at an angle. When you make it straight, it's closer to the house, isn't it?
Oh, that part, yeah, to maintain that 10 feet. I, I used 55. There's probably another four feet as a buffer, just in case my measurements weren't exact. I didn't want to be caught in a snafu. I asked for 55. It's probably at 60. If we slide it, yes, to the east, that, that angle of that measurement, yeah, does change slightly, but not substantial. We're gonna keep it as close to the house as we can. I just, like I said, I just didn't want to have a issue by a foot or something.
Still gotta dig a big hole to put that thing in.
Yeah, but it's not gonna interrupt anybody's property but their property.
And I assume you don't have any concerns with the digging that hole and that, that there'd be caving in or any issues with the dirt or sand that's?
No, because we've got a frost foundation. We've got, you know, 60 inches on the house. So we're down five feet, we're 10 feet away. The other shed is on stilts. I'm not worried about that at all. There's nothing out there. There's no power. There's no water. There's, you know, the gas lines.
So the property line is at right about where that light pole was next to the shed?
Yeah. Correct.
So that shed is on the neighbor's property, right?
Correct. The shed in the tree, yeah.
So you, so you basically need to go six feet more the other way to meet the 10-foot?
To, to the east, correct. It's just kind of sitting there. I mean, it's, it's probably two or three feet away from that. See those white posts in the ground? That's theoretically the property line. It's just, they've been there for 40 years, but.
Any more questions at this time?
So if you want, if you swung it six feet to the east, what you needed, I mean, that wouldn't interfere with anything, you know, as far as the new foundation or?
Correct. Correct. We might have to pop one more tree out between that tank and that shed, but it's pretty close to that tree as I recall. Maybe not if we move it to the east, but probably. Thank you.
All right, so next is the staff review.
Again, the variance request is 2022003, applicant Matthew and Rhonda Hanson, Dennis Blossberg, the builder. The address is 10673 Oak Grove Drive. The PID number is 10030697. The zoning of the property is R2 on Sourd. The request is to consult, install a conforming onsite septic tank four feet from the side yard set line, side yard line, 10 feet required and 55 feet from the OHW. The property is located at 10673 Oak Grove Drive. It's Lakeshore Property on Lake Assawana-McKee. The property was occupied by an existing driveway, cabin, decks, walks, and two house buildings and a pump house. The cabin has been demolished and a new dwelling is under construction, which conforms to the setbacks. Applicant applied for a variance to install a septic tank four feet from the neighboring property, 75 feet from the OHW. A septic drain field is north across Oak Grove Drive. It's on a private road. And it, the drain field is on private property owned by others. There's an easement for said drain field. The applicant builder has determined that the installation of the proposed septic tank from the variance 22 or 21003 is no longer an option due to soils, utility pole, and neighboring shed. Builder is seeking new variance to locate septic tank four feet from neighboring property and 55 feet from the OHW. The setbacks normally in an R2 district, there is no right-of-way setback because that is a private road and it's basically just an easement. The ordinary high water mark setback is 75 feet. The side yard setback is 10 on one side, 15 on the other. Impervious coverage is 25% and the building height max is 25 feet. Existing impervious coverage on the site was 18.42. The proposed impervious coverage is 24.95. Variance is a legally permitted deviation as provided by Minnesota Statute 462357. As it may be amended from time to time for provisions of this chapter as deemed necessary by the Board of Adjustment under stick interpretation of the ordinance would create a practical difficulty and be impractical because of circumstances relating to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property. And when the deviation from the ordinance, when any attached conditions, will still be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Variances cannot create a land use not permitted by the zone. Applicant contends that the size of lots, soil conditions, utility pole, trees, and the neighboring structures prohibit optional alternatives. Findings to support approval, following findings were provided to the board for board discussion in relation to the approval of the variance request. The practical difficulty is due to the shape, size, lot, existing obstructions. Residential dwellings are allowed in R2 zoning district. The proposed reconstruct is reasonable and is consistent with the properties in the area. The following findings may be used to support denial of the variance. Commission finds no practical difficulty and the continued, continued use of the existing structure provides for reasonable use of the property. The property owner is not deprived of their rights but would be deprived of their desires. Reduction in the size of the proposed structure would allow for a conforming septic system. The board may by resolution choose to approve, deny, or modify the requested variance. The resolution should clearly state the reasons for the approval, denial, or modification of the variance. In some cases, this is created by the hardship, I mean, in some cases, in this instance, is created by the developer, owner themselves. Unfortunately, this wasn't found out prior to start a discretion of construction. Be pretty hard to move the existing structure today. I would also note that we did talk to the county about whether this is something that they would approve if the city granted the variance. And they would approve it as long as the city were to approve a variance for setback requirements. Would also point out that there's, I shared with you an email from the adjacent property owner, the Kellys, requesting that, well, they didn't see a need for the four-foot setback from their property line. And I can understand where they're coming from because more digging on their property is gonna leach over to the other side and it's gonna be pretty hard to keep equipment off that property. Then I'm open for questions.
So in the past, if we've had people that have maybe previously had subjects that were with, that were closer, have we had issues? Do we have major concerns? I know that we have the ordinance for it, but I'm just curious if we've had issues or concerns with people who've maybe been grandfathered in the past being that close?
You approved one on Timberline Point. You actually approved one, or this one was approved earlier at four feet from the property line. You would hope that with today's technology and construction practices that it would be a better situation than it was before because you have a compliance system that may or may not have been that way before. The incident with the Timberline Point was a, that was a mound system that was actually right next to the property line. Again, a very small lot trying to, trying to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack, quite frankly.
With it being that close to the, the high water mark, is that a major concern?
Not if it's installed correctly. I think there's 12. Probably 16, 10, 8. There's probably almost 10 feet of elevation between the, the OHW and the, and the building site. So it shouldn't be a concern. Again, if it's installed properly, shouldn't be a concern.
There's, there's no sensors on those tanks if they start leaking with this technology we have now. There isn't such a thing, is there?
Technically, this is basically a holding tank that's pumping.
Right. Oh, right.
It really only has one outlet, which is, got an inlet and then one outlet which goes to the pump and to the lift station, which is going the opposite direction.
So these two tanks are sealed together evidently, right?
Correct.
Yes.
How do you seal two pieces?
You know, it's the first time I've done a two-piece tank. I would imagine expanded concrete some sort of. I didn't know there was an option to it was sitting there.
No.
So basically, if we said, the other option would be if it was a holding tank where they pump out, but kind of what I'm hearing is that wouldn't necessarily be a better solution?
It's, it's basically the same. The, what, in this instance, if in fact the drain field were to, were to fail, that's probably the only alternative is that it would be pumped into a holding tank and then, then pumped again.
But it is a new drain field, right? Yeah.
No.
No, it's not.
Just a drainage field that's on an easement up on the other side of the road.
Okay.
That's the same drain field that, that serviced the cabin that was there prior to.
Oh. Does the county have to inspect those?
Yes.
The cabin was six feet shorter. It would fit right kind of where it was initially.
Pardon?
I said the cabin was six feet shorter. It may fit, may have fit.
Well, I, I think this is a good example of trying to put everything you possibly can on a site that probably shouldn't support that much.
Right.
And I don't think this is gonna be the last one you're gonna see. I think you, you know, as time goes on, I think you're gonna see a lot of larger structures on small lots that probably can't support that.
I don't think so.
No.
All right, so at this time, we're gonna open it to the public hearing. If anyone in attendance would like to approach the podium, they state name and address and feel free to speak. All right, I don't see anyone approaching, so we will close the public input and we will close the public hearing. So at this point, is there a motion that would like to be made?
Point of clarification?
Yes.
There was some discussion here about possibly moving that tank to the 10, the side yard setback to the conforming. Is that in, in play here?
As far as in play, I think because Dennis came up and said that they'd be willing to move it, I think that's.
Okay.
If a motion is to be made, I think that would include the revision for that.
We got one other, just quick question. Can I? Where was the existing tank?
It was actually in front of the other cabin on the west, or the east side, where the, if you go, yeah, right, kind of. The old house was here.
Oh, okay.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the findings and reason being that there is a practical difficulty with the shape and size of the lot that was already existing. I do believe that this would deprive the owner of their rights to have a compliant septic. I also am looking at this saying it is a improvement, given the fact that they are building with new septic. So we have an improved technology that's going in there versus what they had before. So that is A-plus. With this finding, it would be that it would be constructed with the revision of it being 10 feet from the neighboring property to allow for that proper setback. So that is my motion. If anyone would like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, motion has been approved. All right, moving on to the next discussion. We are reviewing the home occupation. And Jerry, if you wanted to start us off.
I'll try. Based on some of the discussion that we had at our workshop, I thought that one of the things that we were charged with is to try to craft something that might address some of the issues that were identified at that time. In your packet is a page of 153.093, and most of the wording is, is the same as the existing wording in, in our ordinance, except for we have added a kind of a introduction that appears in red on the, right after home occupation. It says, "Home occupations are intended to be used in conjunction with primary residential structures to initiate further and develop small commercial business ventures. Home occupations that thrive and grow may be required to relocate to an appropriate commercially zoned area. Home occupations are intended to generate less than 25 vehicle trips per day, including deliveries and employees." I think that kind of addresses some of the issues that were talked about in our workshop. Further, because traffic was identified as an issue, felt that adding in, in section F, we added traffic as a specific thing to prevent or to look at as part of the approval of a home occupation. We've also added a new section, which is number I. It says, "Home occupations are subject to performance standards. The following performance standard may be required as conditions of interim use permits." It goes on to say parking, screening, planting, fencing, berms, et cetera, lighting, vehicle trips, landscaping, drainage, height, outside storage, buffering, any standard deemed appropriate by board, by the Board of Review. That in a nutshell is something for you to take a look at. Does it address the issues that we, we looked at? Are there some more that you would like to be added? Is this something you would like to send on to the council to, for their perusal?
Is there going to be any discussion?
Yeah. I expect that there would be all kinds of discussion.
What are you thinking?
The 25 vehicles a day seems high. If you have 25 semis there coming in, that's 25, that's 25 in, 25 out, or 25, you know what I mean?
25 vehicles a day, that's in and out.
That's in and out.
You notice that I put in parentheses a question mark.
Big question mark.
That 25 was just a starting point, quite frankly. It could be anything that you so choose.
Right. So let's say a person came in and we could say 10 of this particular home occupant. Right?
You can specify according to, if you, if you were to specify as terms of the interim use permit for a home occupation.
Right.
That they're only allowed 10 trips per day, you can make that a condition of the approval.
Do we need it in the kind of intro to say, generate less than a specific number? Or could we, I mean, would it be appropriate to say to minimize the vehicle trips per day? And because under the section I, we can, with a performance standard, limit based on what seems appropriate for the area it's in? I mean, if it happens to be in an area that's maybe, you know, more agriculture or outside of a typical residential, it may be appropriate to have a few more trips allowable versus in a residential section?
Right.
So just to clarify, if I can, Madam Chair, it's, you know, this intent isn't necessarily binding performance standards. It is that this is what is, you know, as Jerry had, and home occupations are intended, not shall or will only. The idea is to put some kind of parameter, but it still allows, I think this language would still allow the commission to say, well, in this situation, we could go more, we could go less. The idea is just to help people understand if they're reading the code that like, home occupation isn't a factory that has 50 employees and gets lots of trucks, lots of traffic. It's not a retail store.
Like, like D, the number of employees. We could limit that to two or three, correct?
I believe you can limit it in any month as far as what you would like.
Of course, to enforce that. As far as the intent, or as far as the interim use is concerned.
Right.
It's, no matter what, it's still an interim use permit in order to have the home occupation.
Right.
Let's see, do I like that one nail salon that was put in there? I don't remember if there was a gap on vehicles, because that's a totally different thing. Somebody's doing nails, they might have that many people. Where somebody might have a business where they might only get maybe five straight trucks in there a day, so.
All right.
I think that's a kind of a big spectrum of stuff there.
But what I'm understanding is when they're requesting this, we have the ability through the regulation here that we can put in that performance standard on a case-by-case basis. Correct, Jerry?
You can add any performance standard that you deem appropriate in the process for that. Some of those you may have in the back of your mind. Some of them may, may come up when you have the hearing and neighbors' concerns come up that you didn't even think of. I don't, I don't think you're limited to what's here. These are just examples of what could be used. But you, you certainly can go above and beyond.
Do you have any concerns that if we state intended to generate less than 25 or whatever number of vehicle trips per day, that people will interpret that to say?
Again, again, the intent is to say, these are for small operations. Once they grow to a certain point, you want them to move on to where they, they're more appropriately located.
Yeah, the key word you said there is want. Want them to move.
And again, you can, also when you're looking at interim use permit in actual application, you know, as we said, you can stick a limit on that. And so if someone grows their business and you say initially you get, you know, 10 trips a day, and now they're going, well, I've now, I've got, and so many employees, and now they're going, well, I've got so many trips a day now and I need to add two more employees, they have to come back, ask for amendment to their interim use permit, and then at that time, the planning commission could say, nope, you've, it's time for you to join the big boy club and go to a commercial property. That is the, kind of the, the beauty of the interim use permit.
I like the changes. I like adding those suggestions so that when somebody's applying too, that they're thinking about those things and perhaps identifying that so we have clarity in what we look
The other thing I forgot to mention to you is also that it's proposed to strike in item D, proposed to strike, and shall be limited to family members living on the premises only.
How do you guys feel about the 25, about the, does any concern?
As long as we can put some kind of limit on it and it gets enforced. Still thinking 25 is a lot, but.
What do you think, Lee?
But if you put 25, is that to be something that's set in stone?
No.
And under number four, we can limit vehicle trips. Well, we could do it anyways even if it wasn't listed here, but.
Right, yeah.
I like that it is listed there because it puts the idea in their head that we might suggest something different.
Right, yeah, because you wouldn't want, people wouldn't want 25 trucks coming a day.
And again, again, I think the idea there is as people are looking, the ordinance is to trigger in their head of, this is not meant to be a high intensity use. So again, if you're trying to do some kind of retail shop and you're expecting to have 50 customers a day, it kind of tells you this isn't the thing for you.
Right.
But if the property backed up to 11, may not be a concern, but if it's in a residential area.
Yep.
But I think that all three of us commented that 25 seemed high. Should, would anyone feel comfortable if we just, even in here, limited it a little bit more? It allows us to expand it if we think it's appropriate, but at least starts with even more of a structure of saying, if it's small, it shouldn't be so. Maybe do something like 15 or 20?
Right, yeah.
Either of you have, do you feel strongly about 15 or 20?
No, I wouldn't go over 20, you know, 20 is still a lot of cars. Remember that? That's 20 in and 20 out, right? Or is it 10 in and 10 out?
To me, it's 10 in and 10 out.
Which I think if you're talking about, I'm just thinking like there is the wine place and, you know, if it's a beauty salon, you may have on a busy day, you might have 10 people that come in. It might not be every day, but.
Right, right.
To me, that seems reasonable. So if we change that, do you agree that we could extend that to the city council?
Can you make it an even number?
Okay.
16?
I just.
25 is not an even number.
If you're going to, if you're going to stick on a number, make it an even number.
Well, you know, 16?
There you go. Like I said, 25 is not an even number.
No, I understand that, but that's why there's a question mark. That was in some of the ordinances that you were looking at.
Right.
That's, it was only meant to be a starting point. This, this is basically a work in progress.
I mean, to be quite honest, the city council could say 20.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the type of thing that, and kind of backtrack a little bit, this is one of the questions that came up when the, the Pepe salsa, the salsa company question was asked, well, are we going to have 10 semis pulling up? And the answer is, if you have 10 semis pulling up, you're not a home occupation anymore. So I mean, it's, it's kind of, you know, I'm not going to have 100 semis coming up to a 1,200 square foot house and moving stuff in and out. So it's just kind of a common sense thing there. If you had it at, at 20, 25, you can always make it lower based on the conditions, okay? And like it was said, if it's right directly on County Road 11, okay, that could be reasonable, okay, because you're not really, but, you know, having an impact on the neighborhood. But if it is back in the woods on a residential area, you know, you may want to say, even though this says up to 25, our interim use permit would say less than that. So I mean, it's, it's really just a guideline. It's a number to throw in there. So you could say 24 or something like that. And then based on where it's located, the, the permit could say, well, you can only have 10 because it's a, a very quiet neighborhood. And that type of thing would be easy to control. Like the, the guy that has the little teeny tiny wires, you know, that's probably going to go out in a shoebox, you know, for 1,000 pieces, okay? And that.
But he's off a Bushman, so.
He's off a Bushman, you know, so I mean.
That's trucks all the time.
Yeah. So I mean, he's going to be getting raw materials in, which might be a truck, you know, once a month or something like that for, to bring in a spool of wire, whatever he has to do with it, and maybe some chemicals or something. But it's the type of thing that I guess I, I would say, let's not get hung up on the number because you have that ability to reduce it. You can always make it less. You could say a maximum of 25, you know, that type of thing.
Same with the letter D, the number of employees, we can say, two, three, one.
Yeah.
Something like this, I don't think you want more than three. I mean, I'm just thinking all about.
We can reduce some of the people and they only have.
Right, right.
Technically, they have more employees.
Pedicures or whatever. We don't have to make a motion on this thing, do we? No.
If we just, if we don't make a motion on this, we're just recommending?
Well, you can make a motion to recommend this language to the city council for their approval.
Right. So just get some language that you want in there that you, that you're comfortable with and then goes to city council and I can explain it there.
Okay.
Well, I would, do we have any motions?
Oh, Jerry's got a question.
He's got his hand up.
Did you zero in on a number? Or do you want to leave it as is?
Well, I think we need to make it an even number as you've made it out, so.
But what is that number if you're going to?
Are we comfortable with 16 still?
Sure, sure.
On that, I'll, I'll actually, I'll make the motion to say, let's recommend this to city council as written with one revision of making the 25 16 under the introductory section. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion has carried. All right, then, moving on to licensed daycare facilities. Jerry, would you like to lead this one? Jerry, would you like to lead this one?
Okay. In your packet is a, is, and I use wooded residential as a, as an example, but basically the proposed language as far as the allowed without a permit would be, would appear in all the residentially zoned areas, but this, this is only an example. But item five and allowed without a permit in all those zones would read specific or exactly like the state statute reads. And it says, "A state licensed residential facility or housing with services establishing registered under chapter 144D serving six or fewer person, a licensed daycare facility serving 12 or fewer persons, and a group family daycare facility licensed under Minnesota rules part 9502 point yada, 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 to serve 14 or, or fewer children." That is strict, stated out in the statute. It conforms to the statute. The existing language that's in all our residential zones does not conform to, it conforms to just about everything except for the 14 at the end. This just brings it in conformance with the statute.
And really, the only change there, as you stated, was the 14, which we had as, I believe, 12 before, so it's increasing by two for the group family daycare facility.
Actually, the last half of that sentence is something that's been added that would have been, you know, it was in the existing language, but this is as per the statute. And again, I'm using the wooded residential as an example, but that would be something that would carry through to all the residential zones.
Any discussion?
No. Yeah, I was, yeah.
Any emotions?
We all kind of agreed that that was a good thing to change too, I guess, with the state, yeah.
All right, any motions here?
I will make a motion to approve and pass on to the city council, I guess. It has to go through the city council.
Yep.
With those adjustments.
Do we have a second?
Changes.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion to send to city council has been approved. And then moving on to discussion of short-term rentals. Jerry, if you'd do the honors of leading us through this one.
I don't, I don't think I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass off to the.
And I was just gonna ask, before we dive into this one, we are approaching eight, so I think now we just, maybe if we just take our quick break now so we don't have to do it halfway through our discussion?
Thank you. We'll take a break now so we can reset.